September 6, 2018, I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and their address. Is there anyone here wishing to record? Seeing none, Counselor Walsh, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuchmarek.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor DeNA Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Yep.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Before we move into public forum, I just want to ask for a moment of silence for the passing of a Fitchburg legend in Fred Sullivan these past couple of weeks. Thank you. Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak during that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you're addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
My name is Tom Scholmack, Real Estate Partners, and this is my client, Maria Cologne. She had some land that she bought off the town. She was cleaning it up and taking care of it for over 20 years, and it wasn't her land, but she's, you know, eminent domain, she was taking care of it. And the town had told her it was free and clear, that the title was free and clear. And we just got her house under agreement last month. We've had a couple of extensions, and now we find out there's a title issue on it. She didn't figure there'd be any title issue, since it's only around 5,000 square feet of land, and it was to be added. So, you know, we might lose the buyers that want to purchase the property. We're supposed to close September 28th. We were supposed to close September 1st, and we've already had a couple of extensions. So, she's already lost one house in Florida that she was going to purchase, and now the sale might not go through. I don't know if you want to add anything with that, Maria?
This is Counselors, this is 241-18.
241-18. Nope, just that I bought the land in 2016, when there was a new program from the city called the side yard sales program. So, if the land was abutting yours and no one else was able to purchase the land, that you could purchase the land, seeing that we were keeping it up, and it wasn't a buildable lot. That was the reason we purchased the land, and we've been taking care of it anyway for 20 years almost. And purchased the land with an application fee of like $300, and was given a deed. So, this year, looking to retire and go to Florida with my family. And we had the house on the market, and we had a buyer, and everything was great. And the closing was August 30th for the first one, and it came back as the side yard sale had a few title issues. So, we're at this point in the game right now. So, how we release that and clear that up so we can sell the property, and the buyers can get in there, if they're still willing to get in there at this point. And just thank you for the time, for sharing.
For the record, again, can we have your name?
Yes, my name is Maria Cologne. I live at 6 Middle Street, Fitchburg, Mass.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I know the city solicitor's office is working with you to resolve this as expeditiously as possible.
Suspension.
Counselor DeNA Tally.
I have to recuse, I have a familial relationship with the petitioner.
Solicitor Postery, I know you had a preferred mechanism that you were recommending.
This is at the Counselor's discretion. I think your auditor and your treasurer was here to speak to this, and they would also like to talk about it if at all possible.
And for that reason, you were recommending that I go to the City Property Committee?
I was considering putting it to City Property Committee, and you have Counselors here that are interested, have heard what I heard over the last, if you might, to your discretion, if you want to hear from your city auditor and then make your decision, then you might want to do that.
Counselor Caddy.
I just think it's appropriate, we're all sitting here, you could handle this tonight, if everyone's willing to speak, and obviously the woman would like to sell her home, and if we send it to committee, it's going to...
I just wanted to make sure Counselor Caddy, you have an opportunity here. So, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules on 241-18, just because of the circumstances. I know we have our city treasurer and auditor here this evening. If Counselors have, I don't typically do this, but if Counselors have specific questions about the matter, I would allow the Counselors to ask said questions. That said, Counselor Boishman?
Need a moment.
Oh, sorry. I have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The item is before you.
Motion to approve 241-18.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 241-18. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Green.
And I guess this would be for the treasurer and auditor. Where is the hiccup in the title with the property?
I...
Or Attorney Postery?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, and at least that way folks at home can hear you as well.
Did you want to? I could talk to, I could answer the Counselor's issue.
Please.
So, the hiccup with the title to the property is compounded by the condition that we require the side yard to go with the house lot. The side yard only has a lien against it from a prior owner. In any real estate transaction, the city is a seller, or any seller, has no obligation to clean a title, to do any of those activities. As a matter of fact, Judge Goldstein handled the transaction exactly how I would have also handled the transaction, in selling the property to the constituent. Apparently, this constituent was placed under the impression that the property had a clean title because of the tax title that it went through. The tax title that it went through was an abbreviated tax title because it was a land of low value. And so, there's a special statute that allows us to dispose of land of low value without going through the full tax title process. It does require some additional steps to be taken by any purchaser to clear the title at the auction on the land of low value. The city was the purchaser because nobody bid to buy that land. And then we put it through the side yard sales program. This person before you became the purchaser of the property. So, the lien on this side yard has now infected her entire house, because there's a condition that says that both pieces of property have to go together. So, when the bank says, "Well, I finance this property," they say no, because they don't have a clean title, and so they can't complete their transaction.
Is the lien, do we know what, is it a dollar amount of the lien of 25 First Street? Of how much money?
Over $15,000.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
First of all, I take a ride by. I want to say you do what my boss is doing, your property looks very, very good, and it looks very clean. So, the residents of that area should be very, very happy with you.
Thank you.
That's number one. But what I don't understand, and I really think we dropped the ball, not you, we dropped the ball. On the side yard sale, if I recall right, and I sat on the meetings when it first started, that the buyer of the property purchased the land, and they were supposed to do the paperwork right away, not wait, no offense to the way I talk, but not wait 20 years. It should have been done right away. That's the whole purpose of the side yard sale. I thought it was supposed to happen, that as soon as you purchased it, it was supposed to go right into the title of your house, and then it was cleared as one lot, not wait 20 years to do it. And I don't understand how we dropped that ball, where we let it sit for 20 years. And now, I presume, the way I understand the petition, you want us to take it back. I got no problem, I guess, I shouldn't say too much yet, but, you know, I just don't understand why it took so long for you to, you know, I mean, it was my, you ought to take a ride by, it was really great. I was really impressed.
Thank you. It wasn't available for us to buy until it became, until it came out to this Butters program. We tried to purchase it years ago when my mom was living there, but at the time, nobody was, we couldn't buy it. But when the Butters program came about, which was through the basketball court in the park that they built behind my houses, when I approached these ladies and asked them, "How do we acquire that piece of land?" And they helped me in finding out about that Butters program. And that's how I purchased it for the $300. But when I received the release of a deed, I assumed, which was probably wrong, that it was a release of a deed, which meant the release in both addresses merged to one, until this came about now. So, the problem is, the lien is obviously in the prior owner's name, which is more than 20 years ago, which is millions of liens in this person's name already. So, I just don't understand why the lien just doesn't go back to him, because he owns, has tons of liens out there. It should just reside back to his social security number.
My question, Mr. President, probably be for the city solicitor, and probably Mr. Brooks. We are on end, since you're the project on the side yard sale. We don't check to see if it's a clean title here, we don't do that, right? That's up to the people that buy the land. Is that their job, and do we make that very clear?
It is stated in the application that the buyer is buying the property as is.
As is. So, we don't say, "You're going to make sure it has a clean title." We don't say that.
Anything specific like that, no.
All right.
I think that's where the, sorry, but that's where the misleading comes from, because it says, I have it with me, it says "as in condition," which I assume "as in condition" would be the property, the land itself in which you're looking at, not "as is condition" to me, which would have said, "You're buying this property, abutting your land for $300, as in condition, that it has 20 something thousand dollars in liens." I would have said, "Let it sit there, because I don't need it. I don't want to take, why would I take on someone else's liens?
No, don't get me wrong.
It's a non-marketable piece of land.
Don't get me wrong when I talk, I'm not trying to put blame on you. I'm trying to rectify what we're doing wrong.
Well, I know, but it just doesn't make sense when you think about it that way. It would not make sense to anybody to buy something like that.
And Counselors, just before, I know there's talk now about fixing the process moving forward, there's a separate petition that's already underway, led by a city solicitor to rectify this process moving forward. So, I know it would be easier for us to go down the rabbit hole of what do we need to do, and how do we need to fix everything else moving forward, just not that we've ventured into that territory, let's just make sure we stay focused on this particular issue.
I understand that.
Counselor Boishman, that wasn't directed at you, I just know that's the next logical place I would go with this as well. So, Counselor Squalia.
Can we just clarify, it's not clear to me on the lien, is this a city of Fitchburg liens, or is this a separate party? And who pays this $15,000 if we release the condition?
It is not a city of Fitchburg lien. It's a third, two third-party liens, and it's very likely that no one will pay the lien, provided additional land court work gets done. And currently, the only person that can do the additional land court work would be a current owner, except for this current owner simply doesn't have the time to do that at this point in time. It'll take several months, if not the year, to do that. So, in this particular case, there's a specific set of facts that I thought the Counselors might be interested in hearing about and making a decision to provide some relief. What's before you in this order is going to be either to release the condition that requires the jointer of the two properties, or to allow us to take the property back, whatever has to be done. But the bank has been pretty communicative with us, and we're working that issue out with the bank as to which way we would go.
So, this petition is to release the side yard and allow Ms. Cologne to sell her home, the home lot separately?
Yes, and there is an alternative to, that would allow the city to take that property back. So, if you read the whole order as it's drafted, we did go on the alternative there because we wanted to present the issue to you once, as opposed to having to come back and saying, "Oh, now we need to do it this way." Because in these real estate transactions, the bank is going to tell us what a bank is willing to finance and what they are not willing to finance.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the city solicitor explained it very well. For people who are familiar with real estate, I suspected that this may happen with these mergers, and I don't think this will be the last one we see. When you're buying real estate, they tell you always getting a deal, you think you are. Pay for title search. And this is what the city, what planning, what zoning wants, is to people have bigger lots and responsibility, which is a good thing for the city, but in your situation, I mean, I think the right thing to do is to release it, you know, let her release, separate the lots, and keep the lots, as opposed to taking it back and starting over. But there will be others, I believe, that are going to come on these low-value mergers. So, what you think is a deal is not always a deal, and pay for title search if you're going to get a piece of land. But to solve your problem, I think we should ASAP, separate it so that they can close. They can still own it and transfer it to the new owner, but what could happen in the future is somebody decides they're not going to pay the taxes on it. So, in five or 10 years, it builds up, the city would have to try and take it again in the same system as it took before, because even if the taxes, if they were city owed taxes, the city still can't forgive those taxes. Is that correct? The city can't, no, I mean, it will be forgiven on the land, you're not going to collect them, but the city does not have the right by state laws to forgive the taxes. So, it's a cloud, it's a cloud on a title which is holding everything up. I'm trying to put it more in layman's terms than legal terms, because I'm not a lawyer. We should allow her to be able to sell her property.
Counselor Caddy.
For the solicitor, what is the quickest way we can help this woman?
The quickest way to do is to approve the order as is, and it will allow me to seek the severance, as Counselor Donnelly has recommended. And on the outside chance that that's unavailable, it would allow us to take the property back. And if that was, if that happened, it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the end of that property. What we would then do is we would hire an attorney to pursue the release of those liens, which we think we might have a statutory right to those releases. So, in other words, without having to pay the liens, it just is going to take some time and some work with the land court. So, the first option is my preferred option, because it keeps us out of it, and the second option is available, and if we take ownership, we're going to fix the problem.
Counselor Zarella.
Most of what I was going to say has already been covered. I absolutely think we should grant this petition and, well, yeah, approve the motion and grant the release so that she can get on with her life.
Was that a motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve 241-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck to you.
Counselors, we're still in public forum, but if you'd permit, I'd like to, and I promise to those here, we'll go back to public forum, but we have folks who have been waiting with us for a couple hours with appointments. I'd love to confirm their appointments and then move back to public forum. Are there any objections?
No.
All right. So, if there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following three matters. New appointments to the Fitchburg Cultural Council for terms to expire September 1st, 2021. The three appointments were for Ms. Milagros Whitfield, Ms. Miriam Ruiz, and Ms. Emmanuela Demofcines. We have both Milagros, Smilly, Whitfield, and Miriam Ruiz, who are with us this evening and have been very patient, sitting through a couple hours of delays with us this evening. But I want to thank them for their service and their willingness to serve this city. And I want to thank our Chair of the Fitchburg Cultural Council, Mr. Bowen, for being here and attesting to their experience.
I think we'll approve the Appointments Committee report.
Say again.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The appointments are confirmed. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. So, we'll now move back to public forum. Ms. LaBelle Pierce, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Jean LaBelle Pierce, I live at 264 Tibbetts Circle. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item 231-18 for supplemental appropriation of $400,000 going to the school department. This money comes to the budget through additional Chapter 70 money at the state level, and it will meet our net school spending requirements. And while I understand it'll go to committee, I've just decided that I'm going to take any opportunity I can going forward to speak about our school building needs. This comes, this money comes at an urgent time, as much of that supplemental money will be used to deal with yet more building needs incurred this summer. Our district's not alone in dealing with some of the especially weather-related issues that have led to new building problems, but of course, it's our district who, it's for those of us who have children in this district that we care the most about, the Fitchburg Public Schools. I serve on the Building Needs Subcommittee for the School Committee. It's a new position for me this year as a Subcommittee member, and it's really been eye-opening. We have extensive needs in many of our buildings. It's the perspective of school committee members that the school budget cannot substantively handle the capital needs beyond basic maintenance and cleaning. So, I'm here tonight to ask that we work together to formulate a plan, to set priorities and strategize over how we're going to meet these needs. There's so much more need than money, but these are investments that really can't be put off any longer. And I just want to say, I welcome the chance to talk to any of you at any time that's convenient for you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public forum during this time? Ms. Ellis, good evening.
Cologne, as you know, my name is Scott Ellis. I'm the manager of the Fitchburg Municipal Airport. On 3 August 2018, the FAA offered a grant for the design and permitting phase of our runway reconstruction project. The FAA's fiscal year ends September 30th, so they have set an original deadline of 5 September to act on that. We got an extension because the City Council does not meet in August. That deadline was extended to Thursday 13 September. So, in regards to Item 239-18, I'm asking for a suspension of the rules so that we may discuss and vote on accepting that grant tonight.
Petition number is it 239-18?
239-18.
Motion to suspend the rules on 239-18. Second.
I have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules on 239-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matter is before the Council.
Motion to approve 239-18. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 239-18. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, Ms. Ellis, and probably Mr. Brooks, on this $600,000 that you're applying for, we're getting it from the government, is that going to be part of the whole package? So, if the runway expansion costs $20 million, that's going to be like $20,600,000?
No, that is part of the expected $12.5 million for the runway expansion.
And so, you're telling me the runway is going to be 12.5?
That's the estimate, yes.
Okay. Now, my question to you, sir, is the federal government and NASH-DOT covering the whole cost?
I'm sorry?
Is the federal government and NASH-DOT, which is the state, covering the whole cost, or would the city have a cost?
Possibly not.
Would not?
There is a new funding source that was approved earlier this year, and then if we qualify for it, the runway will be covered 100%, there will be no cost to the city. The worst-case scenario is 90% federal, 5% state, and 5% local cost. So, best, it costs zero, worst, it's 5% of $12.5 million.
So, you're talking approximately $600,000, right, for the city?
$627,000 currently.
So, what you're telling me tonight, and you're telling my fellow Counselors, that you guys are going to write that check for $625,000, you're not going to come to the city of Fitchburg for a loan. Am I right on?
Sir, we are going to come to the city of Fitchburg for a loan, but we have to pay that loan back, and with interest.
Okay. You know what, I'm asking all these questions, they had a really good article in the paper put out by Paula Stone in the Lister Telegraph-Gazette, and I can't, for the likes of me, I couldn't believe what they said. They said for the rich and famous, the rich and famous.
Sir, no, it didn't.
Yes, it did. And they say, "If you're rich, you're lucky to have it."
No, sir.
Because I even called her up, sir.
That was discussing.
Mr. Ellis, Counselor Boishman has the floor.
So, I called her up to tell, as a matter of fact, I left a voicemail to the editor of the paper and asked her to call me, because some of the stuff that she wrote was wrong, that you're not having a beginning of year, that you owe the city $126,000 plus, you're going to be paying $50,000 a year now, starting this year, for the terminal, and how are we going to pay for all this stuff? Ms. Ellis, how? You're hoping, and I'm hoping when I invest in my company, that it's going to take off, and I'm going to put it on the IPA, have it take off and starts. It's all speculation, speculation. All I want to know, if you don't, if we don't support it, what happens?
If you don't support the airport, or if you don't support this project?
The project. If we don't support the $12.6 million, our fair share of $600,000, what happens?
The project, it won't go forward. It'll stall, and it'll hinder an economic engine for the city of Fitchburg.
Economic engine?
Yes, sir.
Economic engine? Where? Tell me where?
Sir, several, two years ago, the Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division conducted an economic impact study. Fitchburg Airport generates $14.8 million a year for the local economy. Now, I can't guarantee that 100% of that is spent in Fitchburg, but that's $14 million a year for Fitchburg, Leominster, Lunenburg, Shirley, Lancaster, all the cities in that area. If this project does not happen, all right, that number is going to go down. If that project does happen, there's going to be more area on the airport for development, there's going to be an increase in traffic because of an increase of accessibility. I could bring the Department of Transportation, I can bring the Massachusetts Airport Managers' Association in here and show you the numbers. This is good for the city of Fitchburg.
No, this is good for the surrounding communities that are doing a hell of a lot better than the city of Fitchburg. That's who is benefiting. And so, I agree with one of the Counselors, it should be a regional thing with the regional people paying for it, not the poor city. You know what, we were talking, one of our Counselors, there's four Ts, Ms. Ellis, four Ts. You ever heard of the four Ts? Tuck it to the taxpayer. That's what the four Ts are. I'm tired of paying for the airport. I don't get any benefit from it. My fellow citizens don't get any benefit from it. But I see the good and the rich and the famous down there enjoying it and saying, "Tuck it up for Fitchburg, they're good old boys." Well, we don't want to pay anymore, Ms. Ellis. I don't want to pay. I don't want to pay anymore. I wish there's big changes down there. I don't want to pay. I'm sorry, but I don't want to pay.
Counselor DeNA Tally.
I just threw you, Mr. President, to Counselor Boishman, did you say you contacted this reporter yourself and told her these things weren't true about the city?
I called up the...
Counselor DeNA Tally, I prefer not to get into...
I just didn't know that Counselor Boishman...
I just didn't know that Counsel Boishman was a spokesman for the entire council and the administration and the airport, that's all. You know, right there is a perfect example, ladies and gentlemen, of how we are destructive within, because all we ever do when we talk about this airport is trash it. We trash it. And it's very unfortunate to listen to, because I'm a taxpayer too, and I don't mind paying for it, because I understand that I am not a subject matter expert on what this airport provides just to Fitchburg, but I do read what the subject matter experts are telling me. Now, we already had this discussion during the budget session. It was identified to the council very, very poignantly that the reason why the airport is having financial trouble is because they're losing revenue, because they're losing interest in the airport, because the runway does not meet the minimum 5,000 feet for these more corporate jets and, and commercial planes to come here. So the runway as part of the expansion was to bring more traffic and revenue to the airport, so that not only will the deficit be covered, but this loan will be paid back. And there's already been market study upon market study about it. Now, we don't have to like the airport. We can trash it every opportunity we can, and we can tell everybody that the airport stinks and it needs to go away. I hear people all the time talk about marketing the city of Fitchburg and its positivity, and yet we have to listen to this. We do a good job ourselves of putting this city down, and it's already been talked about ad nauseam, why this is taking place. If we don't have this airport expansion, the airport will likely have even more financial difficulty. So we are investing in it largely from state and federal resources to make it profitable, and therefore, they don't have to come to us for bailouts. I know there are people in this room who can't stand the airport. They'd love nothing more than to remove it and get it out of here. That's not going to happen. So get over it. Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
I would like to first agree that we need to fix the problems the airport is having in order for it to become profitable for the city. It's not going to be, if we do let it sit, let it continue to be underfunded, underdeveloped, and so forth, then it will become a millstone around our necks. But I also want to emphasize that this particular order we are voting on is not money out of the city's pocket. We're not making that decision tonight. All we are deciding is whether to accept money from the federal government. They want to give us money, and we're sitting here arguing about whether we're going to take it. And that is the only question in front of us tonight. The rest of it, we can debate down the road, when and if we are asked for money from the airport, and accordingly, I move the question.
I have a motion and second to approve 239-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public forum at this time? Seeing none, move to the agenda. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. There were two letters of appointment this evening, which will be referred to the Appointments Committee. The first is for Ms. Jaclyn Taylor to the Board of Registers of Voters for a term scheduled to expire April 1st, 2020, and the second for Mr. Trevor M. Lawler as a permanent full-time firefighter for the Fitchburg Fire Department. We also received a communication from the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board, which will be placed on file at the City Clerk's Office. Reports from committees. Public Safety Committee oral report, Counsel Green.
Yes, thank you. The committee met tonight and had several orders before us. Petition 180-418, Counselor Amy Green on behalf of George Schmidt to place no parking signs from FHA at Valley Street to Romano Ave. That petition was given leave to withdraw. Petition 221-18, Peterbilt Store, New England LLC to petition for a Class 1 dealer's license, new heavy-duty trucks located at 215 Crawford Street, Fitchburg. That was granted. Petition 228-18, Gerald Blake Jr., TSI Tank Services Incorporated to petition for a Class 1 dealer's license to sell tanks, trucks, and trailers at 70 Benson Street. That was granted. Petition 223-18, Gerald Blake Jr., TSI Tank Services Incorporated to petition for a Class 2 dealer's license to sell tanks, trucks, and trailers at 70 Benson Street was granted. Petitions 224-18 and 225-18 were entered into executive session. Petition 224-18 was denied and amended to read 224-18. We suspend the car dealer license issued to Donald Cordio doing business as Performance Auto Annex located at 1022 Main Street, and to that, the said petitioner must meet all requirements from the Building Department. Petition 225-18, Paulos Amanatias to petition for a Class 2 dealer's license located at 1022 Main Street. That was denied, and a further petition was set forward to revoke the Class 2 dealer's license that he holds at 1033 Main Street as well, and there was an order to remove all vehicles from said property.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Public Safety Committee oral report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Committee, report from the Committee on Records, Counsel Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Does the records report be accepted?
I have a motion and second to accept the records report. Speaking on the motion, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Recessed hearing. 180-218, Detective Paul McNamara to revoke the Class 2 car dealer license issued to KB Auto 209 Lunenburg Street. This car dealer is no longer operating at this address. I now declare the hearing resumes. Detective McNamara.
Good evening, councilors. I just wanted to report that KB Cars is relocated to 285 River Street. However, he's awaiting Compliance Division certification, so he isn't technically open. His sign is up. They did do a pre-inspection, ordered him to put a sign up before they would come back. Just so you know, the Compliance Section does bus inspections, so they're not going to come back till the end of September. But he has a, I talked to the landlord, Mr. Pappas. He is paying rent there. He has a lease agreement, and he's just awaiting RMV compliance approval.
Detective McNamara, at this point, would you feel comfortable with this petition being given leave, leave to withdraw?
Absolutely. He's working hard to, to accomplish what he needs to accomplish.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
I, councilors, I just need to ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
Motion 180-218 to withdraw. Second.
I have a motion and second to give 180-218 leave to withdraw. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Detective McNamara. 239-18, Comcast of Massachusetts 3 Inc. to construct a line of conduits on Water Street as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. Good evening, sir. Could you just state your name for the record?
Date of dwelling Comcast. Water Street, starting at the existing vault located on the property of 130 Water Street, which is the Market Basket property, excavating across Water Street to place two 3-inch PVC conduits 58 feet plus or minus to propose 24 by 36-inch vault, continuing with the installation 24 feet plus or minus to number 85 Water Street, and from the newly placed vault, excavating to place two 3-inch PVC conduits 248 feet plus or minus to number 133 and 147 Water Street.
Counselors, we also have Gary Bevelacqua with us this evening. Should you have any questions, it requires his expertise. Counselor Gina Tally.
Just to clarify, did we not pave that road?
It was paved.
Now we're going to dig it up?
Well, the original petition, this is a revised petition. The original petition was submitted in July, and while we were waiting to be added to the agenda, the street had been paved without any prior notice to us.
That's going to go over well with a lot of people, and I don't blame them. I'm not blaming you, I'm just, I'm just, we just paved it, now we're going to dig it up.
I understand. We did revise the plan significantly to, so, for the least amount of impact to the street, whereas we were going to be crossing the street twice and running parallel down the road. We are now going to propose to cross the street once and then get on and replace the sidewalk.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask, because it looks great right now, and it's going to get dug up. Thank you.
Good evening.
Counselor Boishman, Mr. Bevelacqua is speaking, I'll, I'll add you to the list, though.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Gary Bevelacqua, Assistant City Engineer. Dave met with Commissioner Laxo and I about that. It's, it's an unfortunate sequence of events. Mass DOT let us know third week in July that they were coming in to pave it. They were in the process of going for a grant of easement. It's an unfortunate situation. We reduced the scope of the work within the pavement by approximately 80 percent. They're, they're investing heavy infrastructure to do what they want to do. Yeah, it's, it's completely, nobody's at fault, that I see. Mass DOT just threw the city a donation of paving of that street. We were planning on paving it when we could afford it. They come in and says, we're going to pave that for you, come in and blasted it out. That's the unfortunate reality. They were caught completely blindsided.
And if I could add, this was a continuation of the original petition for us to set the utility pole on Railroad and First Street to build out the Demulas Market Basket property. Sorry, I keep saying Demulas. The Market Basket property come around the other side between the Enterprise to place that vault, and then we were waiting for the engineering to, to finish up, and the granting of the Market Basket easement to move forward with the Water Street piece. And again, it was submitted in July while we were waiting for a hearing date, and then the state came along and paved the road.
I would like to say also Comcast and their contractors, in the 19 years that have worked for the city, I've never had to have them come back and do a, a fix of their restoration. They, they have not been a problem child to the city at all. It is still a patch.
Counselor Caddy.
Could you dig it across Water Street about eight foot wide and then put it in a crosswalk for us? I, I, it's been, it's been discussed that there is no crosswalk there. There's a new business across from Demulas. If you're going to dig up the road, putting a crosswalk there would, would probably fill that hole and appease everybody that were digging up a brand-new paved area.
What type of a sidewalk were you thinking?
Crosswalk.
A crosswalk, I'm sorry.
A crosswalk.
Just, uh, asphalt.
I think we'd have to work with Commissioner Laxo over that, but I know that's been on radar for a while.
I mean, I can certainly take that back, and I'm sure that we're anxious to move forward with, with this project, so I could bring that back, and.
I think, I, I think everybody would feel a lot better about digging that road up if we were to do that. I think it would be good PR for your company. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy, my only concern there, I love the ingenuity there, and I'm interested, but just before we pass it with that condition, I'd love to hear from.
I don't mean to pass it with a condition.
Okay.
I mean, he's going to have to go back to his company. I mean, I know there's a lot of work to be had, but maybe we could work it out.
And I guess what we'd want is, and I won't put the chief on the spot then now, is just, we'd want his office to take a look at whether or not we can put a crosswalk in that area safely, complying with the, the Mass Traffic Code. But wonderful suggestion there, and that's, that's getting creative with an otherwise lousy situation. Counselor Boishman.
I already told you how I feel. The problem I have, it seems like the 11 of us here, the 11 councilors, we all look like a bunch of fools. I mean, it seems like there's no kind of communication whatsoever on any, to me, to me, to me. It seems like there's no kind of communication. I mean, when you came in for First Street for that pole, we had a big discussion about they could have went down there, why wasn't anything said at the same time that you wanted to come up to Market Basket and go across Water Street?
That was mentioned.
Was it? I didn't hear it.
Yes.
Was it mentioned?
That's always been the plan.
Yeah. And the other thing, that, not the, not the bubble, break jaw bubble here, but we discussed that crosswalk over there before at one of the meetings, and I believe they can't put it in because of curb cuts, but I'm not positive, positive. So.
Counselor Fleming.
Actually, I don't have a question anymore. I think Counselor Caddy sort of covered what I was concerned about, a patch job, and hopefully we can put a crosswalk.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I knew that Counselor Boishman had quite a concern about that pole at the end of First Street. There was no alternative in the rear entry?
This, this, this route that we've been working on for the last year is the alternate plan to putting a temporary conduit across the Water Street Bridge and having to relocate that potentially two to three times while we're waiting for that bridge to be rebuilt. So I've looked at this, a number of options, and this Demulas one was really the best one to come around. And again, Demulas was gracious, gracious enough to give us an easement, knowing that we were coming out that side of the property to go across Water Street to provide the service to additional businesses in, in that area. So, I mean, it was extremely nice of them to do that for us.
I wouldn't worry so much as Market Back's being gracious, because they own the property, they want to do business in there, but I just still was wondering if there was opportunity for that rear, the pole over the river and anywhere in there, as opposed to going over Water Street. I mean, I don't want to make it cost prohibitive either. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gina Tally.
So I'm getting some death stares because of what I said, and, not from you, not from you guys, I'm just saying, other people. Because we're going to get the calls when they drive over it and see all the work being done. And I will gladly refer them to the, the Central Office. I just, I'm just pointing out what will be obvious to everybody when they drive down there, and maybe they can avoid calling me about it and call, you know, someone at Central Office, because that's all I'm bringing up. I'm not blaming DPW, I'm not blaming Comcast. I am blaming a little bit Mass DOT, because I think maybe they could have, you know, hey, we're coming tomorrow. Okay, you know, no problem, but I know they have a set schedule. They don't really, you know, I get it. It's just, it's just going to be frustrating, potentially, that we just paved it and then we have to do the work. So I have every faith and confidence that you guys will make it look nice and neat and keep it level, and, and that's it. I was not trying to criticize the company or DPW. I hate even having to go through the list, because it should be obvious. It's just, as soon as you guys are there digging it up, the phone's going to start ringing. You guys just paved it! What's going on? You know? I just don't want to deal with it. You know, but it's going to happen, so.
I could also add, I did have a permit application into Mass DOT, so they knew we were proposing to do this work. But they, they did come back after it was paved. I did call them and to try and find out, you know, why it was paved and so on and so forth, and what is the status of my permit, and then they said, they told me they had no jurisdiction of that portion of the road. Had they have called me before, you know, I may have caught it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I wonder, can we, could we possibly put in a call with Mass DOT and at least try to appeal to their sensibilities to perhaps maybe try to work to rectify this and maybe, maybe.
Well, I'm going to have a meeting tomorrow morning with you and with Lenny, Mr. Bevelacqua, because I want to know what happened here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you.
I need to call Comcast or DOT. It's one of these right now.
Sure.
You know? I need to determine where, where's the communication breakdown? Obviously, there is one.
I also add that when I did reach out to them, I do have an email back from Mass DOT that says they have no issues with us cutting the road, although it is the city jurisdiction now that I found out, they have no issue with us cutting it.
Well, that's gracious of them.
Okay, play Mass DOT then.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I'll be, I'm as critical as anyone, or more critical than most, perhaps, about government and lack of coordination, but how long do you wait for anything? and lack of coordination, but how long do you wait for anything? I have a building, I owned a building on Blossom Street for 40 years. I paved it last year, and you may recall the meeting about bringing Comcast down Blossom Street. I just paved it last year, they had to cut the blacktop. So I waited 40 years. How long do you want to wait before the project goes forward? Upset? Yes. There's, sometimes you can't predict when some of these things are gonna happen. Brand-new blacktop happens so often, water line, sewer line, gas line, some other utility. Some are unpredictable, some you want to strangle somebody, but, I mean, I waited 40 years, one year later, they had to cut the blacktop. So, it's, uh, it's an unfortunate thing. Driveways, parking lots, streets, sidewalks, some are unforgivable, but I love with it.
I, I'll just add, you know, this, you said earlier, it's a breakdown of communication. It's an unacceptable situation, but here we are, and our choices are either terminate service for our downtown business district, or dig it up and lay the conduit and, and get it done, and that's what's before us. And I have no doubt that the mayor will indeed be meeting with this, you know, about this soon, and, and hopefully, you know, the situation's rectified moving forward, but communications break down in small organizations and large ones, and hope, hope it can be resolved so it doesn't happen again, and that Mass DOT, um, maybe, uh, maybe come and give some assistance here. So, uh, that said, if all questions have been asked by councilors, I ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
Motion to approve 230-18.
I have a motion and second to approve 230-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move 231-18 be sent to council as a whole?
Second.
A motion and second to send 231-18 to a council as a whole committee meeting. Speaking on the motion, all the, Councilor Boishman, speaking on the motion...
On this 231-18, I was hoping that you allow the superintendent come and the, Bob Jockler and a person from the school committee that's on properties, I mean, maintenance.
I, I will certainly make that request, and I believe a, a school committee member, Jeanne LaBelle Pierce, was here earlier today, expressing a willingness to do, engage in that conversation, so we will certainly make that request along with, uh, along with scheduling that meeting. I have a motion and second to send 231-18 to a council as a whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move 232-17 through 238-18, and then 240-18 be sent to finance.
I have a motion and second to send 232 up to and including 238-18 and 240-18 to the finance committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Ordinance, 242-18, an ordinance...
242-18 be sent to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 242-18 to its first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is, uh, one in opposition? One in opposition.
243-18 through 249-18 be sent to the respective committees, and to amend 250-18 to read...
Councilor Deanna Tally, can we do that? Two separate motions?
Yes, uh, two...
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to send 243 up to and including 249-18 to the respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to amend 250-18 to read Mike Perry, P-E-R-R-Y, install, to install a berm at 59 Boylston Street, not 39. So Mike Perry, 59.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend 250-18 to reflect Mike Perry at 59 Boylston Street. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor of amending?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move 250-18 be sent to public works.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 250-18 as amended to the public works committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Councilors, just a couple of, of announcements. There is a, the Julia Child Show on September 15th, 6:00 PM. Tickets are $35 per person. It will include a traditional Julia Child diner, dinner and restaurant located at the Senior Center, 14 Wallace Avenue, Fitchburg. Tickets are on sale at both City Hall and the Senior Center. Ward Four will also be holding a Pleasant, Pleasant Street and High Street corridor. Uh, this is not a ward-wide meeting, but a, a targeted meeting for those corridors of High Street and Pleasant Street on September 17th at 6:00 PM at the Fitchburg Art Museum. That said, Mayor Deanna Tally, I believe you had a, an announcement as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to make this, this statement to members of the council and viewing citizens of Fitchburg. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our superintendent, assistant superintendent, school committee, teachers, staff, and custodians, parents, students, building department, MSBA Purchasing, MIAA, our insurance company, for their continued efforts in addressing our school building needs. The following is a small demonstration of many months of teamwork that is being accomplished, and I wanted to update you on that progress. We are at Crocker Elementary, we're awaiting the installation of Univents in the two-story wing. This is a 12-week lead-time project, and we hope the installation be completed before winter break to allow the third and fourth graders to return in January. First and second graders have returned from the past, the old schools, uh, school in Lunenburg. Long Show Middle School, roof vapor barrier is installed, you can see that as you pass by, you see all the staging that's up there. Installed on the entire roof, so water will not be entering the building at all. The roofing insulation board will be installed this week, and the Cooper Restoration work is beginning. As a result of 16 rain days this summer, the work is behind schedule. The water damage in all but four classrooms on the fourth floor have been repaired note by one school department custodial employee. Quite an accomplishment, we thank that individual. Library and first floor, library fully operational, first floors, first floor rooms will be addressed by the end of the calendar year. The installation of the vacuum condenser pump will be completed by October 15th. Fitchburg High School, the mold event was a result of record August heat in 41 days this summer with a dew point greater than 70%. Our insurance adjusters informed us today that they are working on mold events in 40 other schools. This is not exclusive to Fitchburg. All Fitchburg High School fire and smoke damage has been addressed, cleaned, and with only final work to be completed in the classroom where the initial fire emanated from. Funding for capital needs for our school buildings is something I fought for when I was in the state legislature, and I, and I fight that, and a fight that is being continued by our state representative Stephen Hay and our state Senator Dean Tran. As mayor of appropriate, appropriated funds above net school spending and will continue to work with our school department and school committee to address those needs. You heard tonight from one of the members of the School Building Needs Subcommittee. I'm proud of our city and even prouder of the teamwork that our city has exhibited, and we all should be proud of that. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, here tonight, and the viewing public as well. Thank you. One last statement, ladies and gentlemen, just to alert the public. September 11th ceremony at Central Fire Station, that's next Tuesday, at 11:00 AM, 33 North Street, all, all are welcomed. There'll be light refreshments following that, so please, if you can, come and pay, pay our respects to, to all those who perished in the 9/11 attack. We have, of course, we're proud that we have a piece of that steel, and it's, and it's properly and, and, uh, it's properly being displayed. It was laying in the DPW barn for a number of years, so now it's in a prominent location in viewing, that the public can view on a regular basis, and pay, pay our respects to those who gave so much. Thank you.
Councilor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we always try in the community calendar to have events scheduled on a regular basis, so we don't hear the complaint that there's nothing to do here, I, I support the Julia Child thing, but I am upset it's on the same weekend as the Greek Festival, and I think that if people are leaving the events, they could look at what, what's on the agenda for the city. And, uh, to me, I'd love to go, but I won't be there. I support the cause, but if we had a community calendar that people followed, I'm not, I'm sure that we can't be 100%, but we don't have to have two big events on the same weekend, and the Greek event was scheduled, started in March. Thank you.
Councilor Catty.
I just don't mean to put the mayor on the spot, but who was the custodian who did all the work?
You know, I, I've got to find that out. Obviously, he has some drywall experience and painting and whatnot, but, uh, classroom looks terrific, the roof is coming along nicely, it's a, I don't, I'm not sure people realize, that roof is mammoth. It's huge. And, uh, we've also, through a suggestion of someone close to me, we've salvaged 300 of the slates from that roof, and we're working with Peter Capadaglia along with one of our vice principals at Long Show to see if we can create a picture of the school itself, the old high school, the BF Brown School, uh, excuse me, the Long Show School, and we're gonna sell that as a fundraiser, and as a commemoration and a, and a remembrance of that school. So those original slates will be available, we're just working out some of the details. But they've been, the contractor's been gracious enough to palletize those 300, they're at the DPW yard, and we hope that we can move forward with some kind of a fundraising event. But also, but even more importantly, so we remember that school. It's a magnificent building, and we're gonna bring it back to what it should be. Thank you.
An announcement?
Uh, Councilor Boishman.
Yes, I would just like to say one thing, as I travel around the city, I have to remind people that they are responsible for their sidewalks and taking the weeds out. We do not have the manpower at the DPW to go around and take the weeds out of the sidewalks. It's the, the people that own sidewalks in front of the house should be doing that. We only have 14 to 17 people in the DPW, four of them all sick, and some go on vacation, so that brings us down to even lower than 14. So they're doing 210 miles of road, and how many sidewalks, I do not know, but the city, if, if everybody wants a better city and a cleaner city, then we almost have to chip in, because the DPW cannot do it. And it's not the responsibility to take care of the sidewalk in front of your house. You manicure your yard, you pay $12, but you drive by, you get weeds coming out, and make sure your yard look terrible, and I don't understand it, and other people don't understand why people don't want to take the weeds out of the sidewalk.
Let's keep it positive and say, we'll ask our residents and our businesses in our city to join Councilor Boishman and Kusmerik in weeding the front of their properties alike and, and making our city a place we all love.
Uh, thank you.
Councilor Squalia.
To Councilor Donnelly's concern, I'd like to let everyone know that we have a community calendar run by myself and a number of community volunteers at FitchburgMass.org. It's a Google Calendar that you can add to your smartphone. Both the Julia Child Show, the Greek Festival, and a number of other events are on it, so anyone that wants to schedule events and look at other events that are going on in the city, I would recommend FitchburgMass.org for the community calendar.
Councilor Walsh.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, in, sort of in the spirit of the DPW being a little overworked, the playground or the park at Goodrich Street needs a little bit of help with some weed removal. The mayor has graciously agreed, as Councilor Deanna Tally has agreed, to come down and help out on, at the park on Saturday at 8:00. If anyone else would like to join us, they are more than welcome to do that. The DPW is, is a little overwhelmed right now, and so we thought we would take this opportunity to lend a hand.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, councilors.